Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, July 22, 2019. Prior to the start of this evening's meeting, I would like to remind anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or any item for that matter not on the agenda, to finally, to kindly fill out a speaker request form and give it to Lynn Fazekas, our city clerk. She will get it to me and will try to get you on at the appropriate time. A reminder for those of you who would like to speak to an item on the agenda, you have the option of either speaking under Item D on the agenda, which is public participation, or if you'd like to wait until we have actual discussion on the consideration, you're more than welcome to do that also. So take your pick. You can either speak right up front, which would allow many of you, if you'd like to, to get out of here, or if you'd like to wait until the discussion ensues here and speak to that item, then you're more than welcome to do that. With that being said, I'd like to call upon our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas, to call the meeting to order, and roll call, please.
Morris.
Finukin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. I have not heard from Alderman Morris, so I would expect that she's probably running just a tad late, and we would expect her to be here this evening. A week ago, this past Friday, several hundred people turned out for the Lights for Liberty Rally at our memorial park at First Street and Lincoln Highway. I joined others in being very much moved by the music provided that evening by Jen Conley and her brother Joe Jenks. So much so, I asked Jen, who is the music therapist for Northwestern Medicine Hospice, to join us tonight. As your printed agenda suggests, we had planned to have Jen sing "God Bless America", after which we could recite the pledge. However, Jen has caught a bug of some sort, and without much of a voice, she has advised me that she would be unable to perform tonight. But we will ask her back, and having said that, I'd ask you to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record show that Alderman Morris from our first ward has arrived. Carolyn, nice to see you. So let's move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman... Fagan. I've got all kinds of names. I've only known the guy all our lives, right? Alderman Fagan, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Our agenda is approved as printed. We now move to public participation. At this point, anyone who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or any item for that matter not on the agenda, may do so. I would urge any of those who are thinking of doing that to please get your speaker request form up to our city clerk, and she'll get them over to me. We only have one speaker who has indicated he'd like to speak, and that's Louis Schoenberg. Lou, would you like to wait until the item is on the agenda? Okay, we'll wait until that for you to have the opportunity to speak. There being no other public participation requests, we will move along now to presentations. Item E on your agenda. Ramp FY 2019 Human Services Funding Report. Director Abby Morris could not make it, however she has sent in her stead Brooke Schreiber. Brooke?
Yes.
Please come to the podium. And I would encourage Brooke and anyone who speaks tonight to please speak into the microphone. Get it right up there so that we can hear you. Thank you.
Got it. Can everyone hear me? Yes. Okay. I am here on behalf of Ramp, as they said. We just want to come here and thank the City of DeKalb for all that they do for us, and we do have some exciting new programs coming to DeKalb this year. One program that we do have coming that's starting this August is called Project Search. And what Project Search does is students with disabilities can repeat their senior year multiple times. So instead of going to school and repeating that senior year, we created this program where we actually partnered with Northwestern Hospital, DeKalb School District, and those students go to the hospital, and they are doing three 10-week internships throughout the hospital. So they're learning transitional skills to go out and apply for jobs after that. They're learning how to apply, what to wear to an interview. They're learning all those transitional skills that they need, and those students are actually employees of the hospital, so they are in the ER, the OR, the HR. They're all over the hospital. So when the students leave, the staff starts crying. They're super upset that they're gone because they get so close with them. So it's a very neat program to get these students out of high school and out of repeating that last year, so they're out getting those transitional skills that they need in the real world for a job. And you guys have been super supportive of our employment team, which is the team that's in charge of that, and we just want to thank you so much for supporting us. So thank you.
Before you leave.
Yes.
Before you leave the podium, are there any questions or comments on Ramp's service into our community or to our community? If not, thank you very much, Brooke. Appreciate you coming over.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no mayoral appointments this evening, so we move along to Item G, the consent agenda. And all items listed on this consent agenda are going to be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, in which case we would remove that item from the consent agenda. Is there any request to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, let me read the items for our consideration this evening. Number one, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of July 8, 2019. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 8, 2019. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through July 22, 2019, in the amount of $2,958,333.33. Number four, investment and bank balance summary through May, 2019. Number five, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through May, 2019. Number six, our Freedom of Information Act report, FOIA, June, 2019. Number seven, FY 2019 Human Services Funding Second Quarter Report. Number eight, Resolution 2019-113, authorizing an agreement with the DeKalb Community Unit School District 428 to provide emergency medical services for DeKalb High School home football games for the 2019-20 school year. And finally, number nine, Resolution 2019-114, seeking permission to regulate traffic on Illinois Route 38 between First Street and 10th Street and the intersection of Illinois Route 23 and Illinois Route 38 on Friday, July 26, 2019, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the purpose of holding the Kishawaki Festival Parade and authorizing a special event agreement for the Kishawaki Fest. Having read those items, I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Morris. Discussion, roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Consent agenda is approved as presented and printed. We move right along now to public hearings. Item H on your agenda, I will now open this public hearing at 6:10 p.m. Public hearing concerning amendments to the annexation and development agreements for Park 88. First of all, our city manager, Bill Nicholas, will speak to this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody here, is this on?
Yep.
Okay. I want to get out of the way if anybody wants to speak. I just want to say that there's more information on this later in your agenda under ordinances, and I'll defer my comments until that time.
Is there anyone?
Is there anyone from the public at this time wishing to speak to this item? If not, I will close this public hearing at 6:11 p.m. Moving right along, I considerations. Second consideration of the Alulu Brewing Proposal. I'm going to once again ask city manager Bill Nicholas to start discussion on this consideration. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. At the last regular meeting of the council, actually, it was the committee of the whole meeting on July 8th, a presentation from Derek Bly, who's moved to the podium, and his associate Paul Heinz, was made in behalf of Alulu Brewery and Pub of Chicago. We learned something about the history of that firm. The council also looked at some conceptual floor plans and some visual, some graphics that would indicate what they wanted to do, and the old Smith Building, which is known to you probably more as the, where the house was, at 263 East Lincoln Highway. And after some discussion, I think it's fair to say the council was very intrigued by the concept. There was some discussion about the level of TIF support that might be acceptable to the council, and a number of council members, I think probably consensus was that we needed to look at that 30% of the overall project costs that a number of Aldermen voiced their support of. And then the mayor, on behalf of the council, asked the city manager to go back and visit with the promoters of Alulu Brewery and see what we could come up with. So we had a number of back-and-forth conversations, and for a couple of reasons, the initial proposal to put a roof deck on and to have multiple uses up on the roof was eliminated from the proposal before you tonight. One of those reasons is just simply the consideration that around here, you never know, you might get a couple months of really good, consistent use, and then after that, you just don't know. Could be four months, or it could be one month. That is one thing, in terms of cash flow, but the other thing was, it was a significant cost as part of the overall proposal, so represented about a couple hundred thousand dollars, in fact. But the problem is, when you reduce the denominator and the numerator changes just a little bit, you actually bump up in the percent of the overall price that the TIF proposed, TIF support might represent. And that was detailed for you in the background. The actual TIF-eligible features is on, at your place tonight, a little spreadsheet. The total of those is at $728,250. So as I was preparing your background about a week ago, it occurred to me that I wasn't able to address your main concern. And it occurred to me that what the council has done with a number of proposals in the past is look real hard at the ROI, the return on investment, and in this case, we're looking at property tax and sales tax. So I dug into that, made some more phone calls back and forth to Paul Heinz, and got some realistic numbers from sales in the slightly smaller space that they have in Chicago compared to this proposed space, allowing for the fact that Chicago prices are a little bit higher and so forth, and made an extrapolation that is presented in your background. The property tax was presented first. The 2018 taxes payable in 2019 are $10,442. So if I took out the soft costs and also the proposed acquisition share that Lulu had originally put before you, which comes to about $111,250, took that off of the proposed project cost, I came up with a estimated new EAV, if this was to be constructed within the floor plans that you saw at the last meeting, of about $586,452. And you apply our today's rate at that, and you grow a property tax return of about, just under $70,000 per year, and assuming a flat rate and no change in EAV over 20 years, it came to about just under $1.4 million in the return on the investment. And 20 years is a conservative window. For instance, just recently, we did 30 years with the Egyptian. It's been 20, it's been 30, and so forth, but I looked at 20, which makes it harder to generate, for your purposes, a return on investment. I wanted to be very conservative about that. On the sales tax side, again, using numbers and some information that I got from Paul and from Derek, I arrived at, I think, a pretty cheap bill, $20 per customer, maybe 100 customers, kind of came to $2,000 per day. Figured, I took off four Sundays a month, 26 days a month, and figured out what the monthly sales would be, and figured out what the gross sales would be, and over 20 years, with a flat sales tax that never changed, that return would be somewhere around $593,000. So the combination of the property tax and sales tax return, again, I think conservatively over 20 years would be about 2 million, just under $2 million, $1,983,860. And looking at it from that standpoint, I think we have a different view, and I would recommend that we approach this from that standpoint. Not every project will present the same level of sales tax and property tax, but the bump that we get from what they're proposing, again, I think conservatively speaking, would justify further consideration by the council, so I leave that with you to discuss tonight.
And again, a reminder that we will reach no firm decision tonight, although I think what the proposal, what the folks are bringing forward tonight, and what Bill suggests, is that we, because the number, the percentage of TIF participation is ratcheted up, even though the numbers that Bill suggests would, again, make the investment appear to be a good one based on property tax and sales tax over that, the term of that 20-year forgivable loan. So it is sort of a new twist to a proposal that we've heard before. Would you like to make a presentation now, or would you like to hear a few questions? What is the pleasure?
I would be happy to do Q and A. I would just like to add, the numbers that we gathered are from a modest estimate of our ability to raise capital, which is a combination of experience from our prior investors from the initial location, as well as our ability to raise debt. We've utilized the SBA loan before, grants from the City of Chicago as well, and then ultimately, on top of that, our ask is based around that percentage, not the other way around, where it's an attempt to gather as much as we can. And on top of that, the current location would have the full backing of the city location in terms of capital overlay and making sure, your initial years can be at a loss in red until you turn it around by year three, and then ultimately, with the additional production value we have and some wholesale B2B sales that we have, we've conservatively left that out for the most part, with the assumption that we don't know what that capacity will be. I did briefly mention that last time, that we do look to supply to food providers. Ultimately, there's a few other ways that this is going to be backed, so maybe that additional co-signature would help entice the safety of the investment.
Okay. You're Derek, right?
Yes, sir.
Derek Bly. Yeah, right. I remember from last time. Okay. Now, you've heard my comments, sort of an introductory comment. Derek has presented his comments as a result of Bill's redoing the numbers, if you will. I'd like any thoughts. Alderman Morris.
I just want to clarify at this point in time that I have no interest in this endeavor, and I will not in the future have any interest in this endeavor.
Thank you. Alderman Favor.
Again, I really appreciate you bringing this opportunity to DeKalb. I guess the problem for me is still the percentage. Really was hoping to be in the 25% to 30% range. At the current 20-year forgivable loan, we're looking at about a 5, under 5 and 1/4% ROI. If this was a bond or some other guarantee, 5% interest is pretty good in today's market. But we're putting the money into a business where you said, and I don't want to just take your words and use them against you, you said the first three years are going to be in the red. I don't feel that this is a good stewardship of the city's funds to make that sort of an investment. Again, if it was 30%, 25%, I feel it would be much, I would feel much more comfortable making the investment, but for me right now, it's just, it's just too high of an investment.
Sure. Alderman Fagan.
Derek, you're the CFO. Okay. My hat's off to you, because I can see these numbers here, and I can see what you're asking for, but I've got to go along with Alderman Favor on this, on the percentage-wise. I mean, I guess I don't understand what you didn't understand from going from 43 to 45 here. I understand where our city manager's coming in with the numbers here differently and looking at it a different way, but, you know, when I look at this, and the total project, and us giving 45%, and you're, I mean, you're out there saying you're looking for investors and everything like that. If you had 25% from investors, and that says that 30% comes from the business owner. Thirty percent investment on that kind of return, I do that every day up and down the street. But unfortunately, that's what makes us look at the 45%, at least some of us, I shouldn't want to speak for anyone, but that's the way I look at it, is that's, it's, and I don't want to take all that money into one project either. I mean, that's another thing that I have to look at. Do I like the idea? Love the idea. And I'm a firm believer that, you know, some people say, take it away from one brew house to another. I don't think so that. I think that attracts more. People come to a town that's got several brew houses, and they just don't stop at one, they stop at several. So that's what I'm going to say.
Okay, good. Alderman Finukin.
Derek, this is a...
Could you speak into the mic there, Bill?
Sorry. Derek, just as a point of clarification or comparison, you know, you mentioned in your opening statement there that you'd gotten some grants from the City of Chicago. What kind of percentage was that from the City of Chicago?
The University of Chicago itself, as part of a re-beautification, invested $100,000 on our initial estimates of 600.
Okay, so that was from the City of Chicago, then, or the University?
City in conjunction with the University of Chicago.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Verbic.
While you're here, we'd love to have you in DeKalb. Has there been a consideration for a different building to make the math work? Have you looked at other locations?
We have, and it came down to purchase price, some of which were double. So there is the efforts to reduce costs across the board. Some sellers are aware of TIF funds and attempted to bake that into the pricing, so there's an effect there that ultimately, the purpose of the money is to reinvest and not to put towards the sale price. So the current location was the ideal location. I did have a few rebuttal points. I don't know if I should wait till the end of first round, but to those points.
You're more than welcome to give those. No, I would like to. We have one person from the audience. Steve Capitan was late tonight, so he didn't get here and put his speaker request form in before. We like to have some input before you're speaking.
Absolutely.
But, so I'll let Steve speak, and just a minute here, Steve. But anybody else from council? Okay, Steve, you have a thought on this, and then when Derek make whatever additional comments. You can call them rebuttals if you'd like, but call them additional comments. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge that the House Cafe was a great presence in downtown in the City of DeKalb, and I wanted to pay respects to that past asset of the City of DeKalb. I think that a brew pub would be a welcome addition to the downtown as well, but the, simply put, the request for taxpayer funding for this is too much. Secondly, as a matter of policy, and the speaker just a moment ago alluded to this in terms of purchase price, I think it's a good policy for the council to exclude the sale price from the analysis in terms of the percentages, for principle and for the reasons that he mentioned about this issue of baking sale price into the subsidy. And finally, I'd like to encourage the council to ask the staff to incorporate the time value of money with regard to the analysis of the return on investment. Alderman Favor made reference to it by bringing up a bond, but there's a formal process by which the city staff could analyze this and incorporate the time value of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, any further discussion? Alderman Morris.
I guess I think I've heard that people are a little disappointed that the rooftop went away without a reduction in percentage, and I know Mr. Nicholas spoke to that to some extent. As far as the time value of money, as Steve Capitan just mentioned, I guess I want to bring up the idea that while we can quantify that very solidly in a more, you know, quantifiable way, I think it's relevant to consider how the house was a substantial entity downtown, and the attraction of one location creating an attractive atmosphere for more locations. So I think that's highly relevant, and I think that, you know, building on the idea that city manager Bill Nicholas mentioned, that these estimates he had were conservative, it is very true that every time I went downtown, the House Cafe was sort of the most happening place. So I think that's a relevant consideration in this, and I wonder if, you know, adding a more modern aspect to the House Cafe might make it build on itself, so it's just something I want to throw out there.
Alderman Smith.
I wasn't here last week to hear your presentation, but I've done a lot of reading on this. I appreciate the idea. I have children who frequent these, one in Chicago, my daughter in Dallas. There are literally rows of brew houses, and it's one of the most, the busiest areas of Dallas that I, you know, she's taking me to. With that said, I crunched the numbers. Even by taking the building out of the picture, I think we're still at 39%, and I think the council was together, was somewhat firm on 30%. I don't want to push you away, but the numbers, to me, are too high. I, you know, the other thing I agree with Alderman Morris was the rooftop. My son said, oh, we'd love the rooftop. My son collects, anyway, enough said about him. So I think it's a great idea, and I think it would really work. Honestly, the numbers, to me, just don't work out for us. Keep working. I think you can make this work. That's my opinion, and thank you. That's my opinion, and thank you.
Okay. I don't think there are any additional comments, Derek, if you'd like to make a few closing comments on this.
And thank you for the feedback.
Sure.
Three main points to that, which I'll begin with the initial comment regarding the three years to Tom. There's an old adage in food and beverage, F and B, that is, year one, you lose money; year two, you break even; year three, you make money. So, we work on a horizon of three years minimum, and then from a standpoint of return on investment, that's a three to five-year return, usually 10 years, in some more advanced industries, life sciences, medical, et cetera. That being said, for us, this is not our first location. So, our intention is profit in year one, but we do provide those conservative estimates as part of that. So, the way I talk, maybe it was a misspeak on that front, but ultimately, the behind-the-scenes discussion is, we don't have time to wait around for three years. We need to learn from what we did at the Chicago location, on top of having that support system there to cover all tax revenues, which is the source of return for this location. The red comment refers to net income, which can be based on the capital outlays in year one, as well as some of the startup costs that you will only see in that initial year that go away as part of regular operations. So, all that being said, the intention would be for a much quicker turnaround into the black, but that represents towards our investment side, while certainly, as the payer of our monthly city, county, federal, and state taxes, that those are all paid on time as expected. So, hopefully that addresses to the point of the ROI, that is the return functionality of the city's investment in that plan. Two, I would challenge the hard number with regards to what the investment amount is, as opposed to simply just the percentage amount. Bill, I think, laid that out nicely in terms of how that is impacted based on just what the investment total is, and I certainly respect that the total percentage is there, and especially in terms of a diversification standpoint. You obviously don't want to be too over-leveraged in any one particular location, but ultimately, it is a smaller outlay, given some of the other investments that have gone on in the city. So, I just challenge you to that hard dollar component, which then rolls into the third facet, which is the network effect that there is when it comes to breweries and brew pubs. We're certainly no stranger to that. Chicago has officially taken the title as the number-one brewery capital in the country, meaning the single-most locations of any given city, and we've certainly seen that effect. We've seen that effect both in the cross-sales between companies that we collaborate with, we share beers with, and then we ultimately reference back and forth. And we've also seen that in the investment that the city has made. Being two miles just south of UIC Pavilion, there has been significant investment in the infrastructure of the roads and bridges that lead directly to us from Ashland Avenue, as well as a restructuring of both the roads and the sidewalks directly surrounding our property. So, there is interest, whether stated explicitly or not, from the city, that they agree with what's going on, and then ultimately, as I started with on the third point, a third location, now it's a party. So, we've got three here, and that, especially with a location such as this, there's the efforts for crawls, for bus tours, for just aficionados that want to come and they want to make a night of it, so they try out all locations. So, there's a synergy there that takes place, and then ultimately, there's, you know, there's a little bit of just hope and honesty and excitement surrounding that, that when you, when one comes in, several follow, and that's where we're at, and we'd like to not just be the stragglers behind the first two, but ultimately assist them, however it may be, in terms of our interactions with them, with it being their first location, and then provide what we know from the mean streets of Chicago, and ultimately, we assist each other. It's not a competition. It is a network effect where we help each other succeed.
Thank you, Derek. We appreciate you bringing this to the council here for the last two meetings. We really do. And I think what I hear, and I hope what the public hears, is that I don't think there's anybody on this city council up here, including the mayor, that doesn't like the proposal. I sense that there may, I see him, Carolyn, yes, I see that hand down there. Let me finish, if I may. I don't think there's anybody on this council who does not want to be as productive as possible with taxpayer money, with TIF money. And I hope you understand that.
Of course.
So, I understand that there are at least one more comment tonight. I was going to suggest that if anything you said, or if there's anything that the council heard from other, their fellow aldermen, they'd like to make an additional comment, they're more than welcome to do that. And with having said that, I'm going to call on Alderman Verbic.
I really appreciate your due diligence. My preference would be that the rooftop feature be added back in. I would be willing to meet halfway on this. I believe in this, and would suggest a 37.5 percentage cap if council would consider that.
Alderman Morris.
I would say I'm highly in support of that as well. I think, I think the rooftop thing, element was key to making it unique and attractive and a new feature for our town. And I think that, you know, I'm willing to wiggle a little on the, you know, I think we had hoped really for 30%, and I was a little heartbroken when I didn't see that it was there. But I think that the appeal of this endeavor in our downtown can be attractive to other organizations, and I think for that reason, I'm willing to wiggle on that. There's opportunity cost. You know, I know that Alderman Faber mentioned, you know, maybe we could get the same for a bond or something of the like, but the issue there is that bond is not going to attract other people to downtown. So, that's where I'm thinking.
Alderman Faber.
No, I wasn't saying we should invest in a bond. I'm saying the ROI for this project is under 5.25%. So, we're going to get back $2 million in taxes and sales tax, property tax and sales tax, for a $728,000 investment over 20 years. So, our return on that investment is only 5.1 something percent, less than 5.25%. So, I know some companies, when they're investing in research and development, they won't accept a project that's less than 17% ROI, which is tremendous. But it's because you're using money that you could use for other projects, that you could use to do other things, and if it's not going to have a big payback, then it's not worth doing it, number one. Number two, there's no guarantee that this is going to last 10 years. What if the beer craze is just a fad? I don't want to be negative, but I'm just saying, what if in 10 years from now, you know, just like online shopping, we, as a city, we invested in several large, big-box stores, and today, online shopping is everything. Everybody wants to buy online, have it delivered to your front door. So, if Craft Brewery is just a fad 10 years from today, you know, we've expended all this money, we aren't going to get to year 20. That's what I'm saying. There's a risk, there's a risk and reward. At 5.25%, the reward is not there for the risk, for me, to put it out.
Alderman Morris.
I suppose the alternative risk that I see is that the building remains vacant, and that we have multiple vacant buildings in our main street. So, that's the alternative I see. So, you know, I think 17% ROI is fantastic if you are an aggressive enough company to attract that sort of investment, but if we aren't quite there, that's what I'm thinking.
So, one of the criticisms that has been, come back to, certainly to me at least in some of the emails, is that, you know, why don't we spread the money around? Why don't we give the money to some, you know, why do we keep always giving it to the same person or same developers? And a month ago, we didn't even know about this project. So, who's to say there's not someone who is interested in coming in and looking at O'Leary's, and they want to turn it into something? It's a fantastic building with fantastic equipment, and I understand that the seller has lowered the price. It's all turnkey, fantastic. I'm saying we have opportunities, we want to invest in our community, we're looking for people to come with projects. As part of our vision, we said, those that take the first, make the first projects are going to take the highest risk, and those that come along afterward are taking less risk because they know the market is developing, and so we're going to invest less money for those that come along later.
Any further discussion? What I see here, Derek, and others, is that, I think I've done a little research, Alulu is on the South Side of Chicago.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
We've got two Southsiders here who are great White Sox fans. Scott McAdams to my left, Bill Fanouken to my right. I think we're going to give you another strike at this, another chance. I hope it's not a strike three, based on those who feel that this is a great concept, but it may very, very well be that. So, if what you've heard tonight, if you've gotten any consensus whatsoever, and I realize that from the varying views, it may be difficult to take what the bottom line of this discussion was. Just a moment, please. Yeah. And, but, but I'd like to, I'd like to see this, since we're not voting on this tonight, you take a look at the rooftop proposal. We at least have a couple folks up here who think that might be the game changer for them, if this comes, when this comes to a final vote, and if you could work with our city manager and staff, we'll have you back another time. Now, having said that, Alderman Fanouken.
Well, just as Mike Verbic, Mike Verbic talked about, if we could add back in the rooftop, that it would put us back to that original 1.8 million concept. If we did the 37.5% that Mike is suggesting, we're at $675,000. My point of view is that may be a reasonable compromise if we can make that work for you and for the city. I think, Mike, that's the number you threw out in terms of percentage, and while that's greater than the dollar, well, it's a little bit less than the dollar number provided tonight, but it's not significantly less, and maybe that's something City Manager Nicholas and you can continue to discuss and see if we can't make something work.
There was one further caveat, too, with the rooftop. Initially, given the debate and nature of whether or not the college effect on the town and its impact, frankly, our primary season is in the warm months. People don't even want to go outside during the winter, but here, the later students and the graduate students are in town during the winter and need a location to go to. So, there was a counter-seasonality effect that we calculated into our projections. And then to further bring it full circle in terms of the current location of DeKalb, with the rooftop addition, there is the emphasis for weddings and additional parties. So, we have impromptu parties all the time at Alulu. Just this past weekend, my friend's wife had her birthday, we put it together in four days, and immediately we were upstairs, and we had it. So, that impact is to further bring in more formal events to the rooftop or the main floor, but ideally, with the addition of the rooftop for that unique appeal, you could have both the wedding and the reception there. We provide the food as well as the alcohol, so there's no need for outside catering, which is sometimes a logistical improvement. So, ultimately, a one-stop shop, and that was the intent, and then again, we've mentioned with the cross, the cross-sales and functionality between the locations. So, I just request you to consider that as well. Appreciate it.
Well, for our first consideration tonight, this was a heck of a discussion. It really was. I appreciate your city councilman making their, doing their due diligence and looking at the background. Bill, we appreciate your putting all this together, and Derek, your team. Hopefully, you guys can get together, and who knows, we may see you back here in another couple weeks.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just so I know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fanouken suggested something that was on my mind a few minutes ago, and with that premise, I'd like to continue the conversation, but I'd like to know if there's something approaching an informal consensus about that. Councilmember Verbic suggested, started this, and then Councilmember Fanouken gave some more flesh to it, and that is, if, looking at the original proposed concept of 1.8 million, which included the rooftop, 37.5% was the 675,000. If you're generally in support of that, that will help me as I pursue this with the applicant.
We're not asking for a vote. I think the bills...
No, no vote. I just need to see...
What Bill's looking for is just general, from that idea, would that be something that you'd consider?
Can I say something?
Yeah. Alderman Fagan, sure.
You know, we're only talking about $50,000 difference, is what they're going to ask for. Okay? So, you know, if you want to split hairs off of 45 to 37, we're not really going about on what we wanted to achieve originally. You know, that's my point. And now, you alluded to the fact that some of these property owners want to take the TIF money and included, you know, that's, the price goes up in the building. You know, this building, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this building's only assessed at less than $300,000.
Tax value, tax assessment value.
Yeah, it's about 260 on value, and I got a price, purchase price here at 4.5, and that's really upsets me. You know, taking advantage of taxpayers' money, inflate the building, the free money, that's something that I have to consider also.
Do we still have the consensus that we would at least consider that proposal? Okay. I know a couple of you are going to have difficulty with that, but I think we have enough consensus that we can bring this back. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, City Manager Nicholas. Appreciate it. Okay. Our second consideration tonight is the sale of beer and wine at convenience and food and fuel establishments, and once again, I would like to ask City Manager Nicholas to address this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This arose, as I did mention in the background, but we've had some conversation about this. The city has a property, 1101 North First Street. It's on the market right now, and there's been some interest from potential buyers, and they've asked the question. I've answered the question that we currently do not have the licensure for beer and wine for food, fuel establishments, and they've asked if there could be a council discussion on that, and so I bring this forward to you for conversation, and I know that there are some people in the audience who want to speak to this.
Yes, I have one, a couple folks who would like to speak to this item. Prior to Louis and Steve Capitan speaking to this item, what I'd like to do is to just give a review from my perspective on what has happened here. I think Bill sort of alluded to it, and that is the fact that we have had a number of folks over my last couple of years as mayor who have come in and had requested consideration for beer and wine, and it was pretty clear that this council in the past has said, "Our ordinances are something that we're very, very comfortable with," and so there was no need, from my perspective at all, to even see if there was any interest in bringing that forward at that time. However, I did say to a few folks, we have three new aldermen coming aboard in May after the spring elections, and what I will do is to see if it might make sense to run this up the flagpole again, if you will, to see if there is any interest. For those of you who would support a proposal like this, and there have been a number of those, they indicate that our nearby municipalities, Malta, Sycamore, Cortland, all allow this kind of commercial activity in gas stations, whereas our ordinances do not allow that. So, tonight again, this is a discussion. We want to see where it is that folks and council might stand on this. I'd especially be interested in hearing from our three new aldermen on this. Before we have discussion, I'd like to ask the two folks who have asked permission to speak to this, and that is Louis Schoenberg. If you've come up to the podium here, Louis, and I would... If you've come up to the podium here, Louis, and I would ask you to try to keep your remarks to three minutes or less.
I'll try.
Okay.
Just want to introduce myself quickly. Louis Schoenberg, I own American Liquors in DeKalb. My friends call me Louis. Most of the people in this room have not been around for the last twenty-some years that I've owned my store and the, and the way the, we had A licenses and the way they've been kind of cut apart over the last twenty years. The OSCO got a liquor license by buying out a little tavern called the 1009 Club. They paid them $120,000 to get their license, and then they got their license to sell liquor. I paid a premium to get my store, other people have done that also. The A license was, you could do anything you wanted, you could be a package, or you could be an on-premise bar. Things started falling apart maybe twelve or fifteen years ago, when the grocery stores wanted to come in town. Schnucks, again, most of you were never here, Schnucks came in, "All we need is a thousand square feet. That's all we need, otherwise we're not coming into town." The council wanted a grocery store on that side of town, so they gave it to them. And over the years, they changed the laws and changed the laws, not this group, but different groups, and now, basically, if you go into Schnucks, they have liquor and beer and wine all over the store. That was not the original deal. Also, you know, you could, four kids can come in, three of them are nineteen, one's twenty-one, they can go shopping for all their liquor, and then one can go to the checkout. In fact, they even have self-service checkouts. Hey, great, that's real safe. And in our store, if a kid comes in that's twenty years old and wants to buy a couple of two liters of Coke, we tell them, "No, we cannot sell you in this town. You have to be twenty-one to be in our store, so if you can't be in our store, we can't sell you." So goodbye, we'll see you when you're twenty-one. Anyway, and then the next step is, a couple of regimes ago, we lifted the limit on licenses, there's unlimited licenses now, so anyone can apply for one. An alderman that was on the bench here for years and years told me many times, "I would never give Walmart a license." He voted for it, Walmart has a license. It's just on and on. We had a system that we bought into, and it's been degraded consistently over the years. The biggest thing that I think you should consider is public safety. I used to have fifteen employees, now I have seven. I staff higher than I can afford to because it's dangerous to sell liquor. You're going to have all the, if you're going to have these convenience stores and gas stations with one little clerk sitting there, and they can get overrun by three, four teenagers, they'll never see it, they'll be getting, getting stuff out of here. I think our new police chief should have a red flag this big. This is dangerous stuff. They said, yes, that in other towns, they do this, and if you look at the other towns, there's no independent liquor stores left, maybe one.
You're at three and a half minutes.
Okay.
If you wrap it up, Louis, please.
I will. Public safety is a major issue, there's a lot more dishonest consumers in this town than there used to be, keep it in mind. Last point, you're going to make some new fees if you sell these licenses, but if you have a couple of old-line liquor stores go out of business, you're going to have empty buildings, and you're going to lose money anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Steve Capitan, you'd like to speak to this item?
I don't have a strong view, one way or the other, about this fundamental decision. I haven't really examined it closely enough to express that opinion, but I can tell you that I would be adamantly opposed to adding gambling into the gas stations and convenience stores if this were to pass. I would also encourage the council to look at past deliberations of the Liquor Commission when they examined this issue, and see what they discussed with regard to this idea of liquor in the, or sales in the convenience stores and gas stations as part of your deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think I use the expression, "run this up the flagpole," let's do that. Right now, it's very clear, our ordinances are our ordinances, we do not allow any consideration for beer, wine, and liquor, or beer and wine in convenience and gas stations. What are your thoughts? Alderman Fagan.
Well, let me just first say that I ran on the pretext of pro-business, and I guess what I'm going to, you know, from what I said before on the first consideration, I don't know what appears as, as not business-friendly, but I do want to say, what I'm about to say is business-friendly, is, you know, in my ward, we've got three gas stations, but we've also got three packaged liquor stores that are owned by individuals and not by large corporations. These people have been around for a long time, they've been, these people have been beat up the last fifteen years with new rules, regulations, not only, you know, what we've done, but through the state of Illinois also. They're small business owners. My folks were small business owners. I've owned small business, and you know, it's, it's very difficult. It's not as if the gas stations are not going to stay in business if we don't allow them to sell beer and wine. The other thing is, we've got, you know, you talk about Sycamore, Cortland, Genoa, Malta, you know, in Cortland and Malta, there's no other place to buy alcohol. I mean, there's no, Malta, there's no grocery store to buy anything. I get that. Sycamore, you know, just, Sycamore can do what Sycamore does, but, you know, when I look at, with us, it's not that far. Anywhere you are in the city of DeKalb, it's pretty easy to buy a six-pack of beer. Am I wrong? I mean, is there that far to go? And, you know, when you talk about public safety, when you think about it is, you know, you've got, you've got the person behind the counter at a gas station, and, you know, gee, when I was underage drinking, did I ever try to buy alcohol? I think the statute of limitations are over. But, you know, where would I go? I'd go to the gas station, you know what I mean? Instead of rather go to Louis' place or somewhere else, but, so I really have a hard time with this, I really do, and that's my two cents.
That was more than two cents. Okay, Alderman Morris.
I have to echo what he's saying. I think, you know, the city created this, this set of rules that allowed these businesses to flourish, and I think it's really disingenuous for us to consider taking that opportunity away from them. I understand that we have this one location that would benefit from this potentially, but I really think we can't harm our small business owners like that. I think that's not right.
Alderman Verbic.
I had an opinion when I first read this, but I thought I would do my job and go out and talk with convenience store management in the sixth ward. Very enlightening. They struggle right now with behavior issues with a number of their customers, and they have, they cannot imagine how much they would have to staff up to be able to accommodate the alcohol business, and especially overnight, and they have very, they have a very difficult time staffing their businesses overnight, and they believe that this would be another strike against being able to attract and retain great quality workers. So, the other notion, too, is that when you start thinking about it, this opens up, I think I counted if this new place was included, fifteen. Fifteen gas station convenience stores that could end up offering this, and I got to tell you, our police force right now is stretched thin beyond belief. So if you task them with trying to maintain compliance in an additional fifteen locations in the city of DeKalb, I agree, it's going to be very tough to keep us as safe as we are now.
Alderman Morris.
I think I would just caution the council in general to creating rules in the future that are not consistent with the rest of the state, because I am highly in support of protecting our small business owners, and I don't want to hurt them by changing the rules at this point, but I think that originally, we made rules that were not, and I'm ignorant of what the background is on this, so I apologize, but perhaps we made rules that, that gave them the opportunity to flourish, and now we're considering taking them away. So, I would just think that if we could be more cautious in the future to not create rules that aren't in keeping with the rest of the state, then we wouldn't have awkward relationships with our surrounding communities. I think that would be better.
Any, Alderman Favor.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's kind of a, I was looking at it both ways, where, I don't think I've stopped anywhere for fuel on a business trip or anything where you couldn't purchase alcohol. So it is kind of the sign of the times today, and so maybe DeKalb is a little bit of a holdout, but as Alderman Fagan stated, you know, it is being business-friendly that we have the rules that we have, and what risk, if somebody were to come in and, and let's say a new business owner came in and built a new packaged liquor store, and the risk to him is that at any moment, this city council can change that requirement, and his investment could potentially be worthless, you know, if, if we allow that. So, right, the actions we take, as Alderman Morris said, is, you know, they have, you know, they have consequences, and so I think we need to weigh this, you know, unless there's a burning desire to allow us to have packaged sales at gas stations, I don't necessarily, I don't see the reason, I haven't heard anybody give out any great reasons why we should pursue this.
And I think this was a situation, too, any indication we do not take means that, you know, this council at this point in time is very comfortable with what we have. Do I, do I hear any more weigh-in? Tracy, you have any weigh-in, one way or the other? Not your new alderman, you know, and I'll take full responsibility in working with Bill and saying, hey, this is something, and I will do this with any matter, whether we're talking about beer, wine, housing, whatever. If we have folks who come to us, or come to you, and we feel that it is something that we want to have a discussion on, I think it's only fair to the residents of the city of DeKalb that we do that, but in bringing this, I had no, no endorsement of the proposal, I simply wanted to see what you, what your thoughts were. So if you, Tracy, I'm not begging you to say, to say something, but if you'd like to, please do.
Yeah, I will.
You've been here all your life, so.
Well, I should take, well, Pat and I, never mind, we'll talk later. I side with everyone on this. My concern is for enforcement. I honestly, coming from that world, twenty-four hour a day, how, how is the police department, given their staffing levels, going to handle that? I mean, maybe if they were up to staff, we can turn, open a business and sell alcohol quicker than we can put police officers on the road to handle the influx. Not saying that we will have any, because these, these businesses do a really good job, but we're giving, we're leading to temptation. How they, you know, we'd have to, I would take, change the ordinance to, for our sales to have something to separate it. Yeah, I just, I think status quo, maybe is the way for me at this moment.
Okay.
Yeah, I also agree. It seems like if the business owners wanted it, could be one thing, but it seems like the business owners don't want it.
I think it's fair to assume here that under this consideration, we will not be bringing this back in the form, in either form. We do appreciate those who have spoken for and spoke against it, and, but again, I want you to know that you've got a city council here that is open to discussion, that is open to deliberation, that is open to hearing both sides of the, of the coin, if you will. And in so doing that, I think we serve our constituents, our folks in our ward, in a much better way than if we simply sit here and do nothing, and never look at the changing times. So, thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to resolutions. Item J, Resolution 2019-115, approving an amended transit services agreement to allow for the transfer of two bus routes from the city of DeKalb urban funding to DeKalb County rural funding. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukun, seconded by Alderman Favor. I have no one who would like to speak to this item. City Manager Nicholas.
I'll be brief. Our transit coordinator, Marcus Cox, brought this to my attention, and I'm pleased to say, you have an opportunity very quickly here to save $150,000.
(laughing).
Through the, the system that is involved in the funding of mass transit in this area, for which we have a local share, but it's a modest local share compared to state and federal funding, it is possible to shift a part of the local funding from the city to the county. The county is able to utilize a rural funding source, and that will allow us to save $150,000 in the funding that has here before been allocated to help with routes 23 and 24, which provides service to Kishawaki College. I want to hasten to add that service will not be reduced as a result of this, it's just funding source has shifted, and we'll be able to use that money in transit area where it's much needed to help offset our costs, so we recommend your support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukun.
Yes.
Smith.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That resolution passes, thank you. Number two, Resolution 2019-116, authorizing the adoption of the city of DeKalb, Illinois Transportation Title VI Program, and authorizing the city manager to approve amendments to the program to satisfy requirements of the Federal Transit Administration. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Fanoukun, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas.
As the mayor mentioned, we are required to submit to the federal government, to in this case, the Federal Transit Administration, from time to time, plans that address one or another of requirements in the federal code, and one of those, Title VI, encourages us to do what we can to ensure that minority and limited English populations in our region will have equal opportunity in the planning process. The plan that is to be presented by Marcus Cox does address those populations and also the requirements that are laid out in the federal code. This program, and I don't know if you had a chance to look in the background on it, but this program is ready to go on, we just need your assistance in approving this measure.
Good, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukun.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Motion carried, that resolution is approved. Number three, Resolution 2019-117, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the DeKalb Public Library for the use of meeting space in the library building located at 309 Oak Street. Motion, please. So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. We do have one person who'd like to speak to this item, once again, Steve Capitan.
I won't use my three minutes, Mayor. You may have, you probably know my opposition to this poll process from a previous meeting, but I did want to raise a, well, first of all, just to reiterate, I do not see this arrangement as a long-term solution for the city, and as such, it's stated in here that we would have to establish, well, first of all, in order to provide television broadcast, we'd have to put that in, which is at some cost. cost. I think it's wonderful to share with the library and allow them to be able to use it. That's a positive aspect of it. And then, ultimately, if this is not a long-term solution, as I would predict that it is not, then the library ends up with the equipment. We'd have to build it all over again. One last point, it says this agreement shall allow the city to use the library after regular I didn't really scrutinize the deep background. Is there a cost associated with that? And if so, what is it? So, thank you.
Okay. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick answer to that question, Steve, is no additional cost for that particular item. So, this is, it truly is a process. There are three different boards that are involved in a process. And we are talking tonight about two draft IGAs. And then, just because of the different times that the duly constituted, constitute, excuse me, library and later on, Park District Boards meet, we're first, but we have, out of the box, I guess, for public consideration of these IGAs. But, we have been working hand-in-hand, in this case, with the library director and council for the library. And when we get to the Park District proposed IGA, also with the executive director, who works directly, of course, with their legal counsel and also with the library, or the Park District Board. So, what we have before you in this particular item is the IGA with the library. I've given you the, a little bit of the background on the respective roles and responsibilities. The library has hours every day that they're open, and usually, they close at nine. And allowing for the fact that council meetings, although it doesn't happen very often, but could go past nine, especially if there's an executive session after, we want to make sure that no one would be blowing a whistle on us and we'd have to close the meeting down. So, it does say that there will be no fees at any time for meetings that are held for city council purposes and for the Planning and Zoning Commission, which would be allowed to meet one or another of the first four Mondays of the month. Also, we would be held harmless against any legal claims arising from negligence on the part of library staff or so forth. Something happens in another corner of the building while we're having the meeting, we're not held responsible for that. Also, the library would provide for the setup and teardown of any chairs and tables in the Asuna's room. They, from time to time, have other activities in that room, different days of the week, and so, they may need to move some tables and chairs around. They would do that at no cost to us. And then, as was mentioned by the previous speaker, we would be installing the means to televise our meetings, as we have been. We're not going to be able to move the equipment we have, which sooner than later would be, need to be replaced anyway. And that cost would be ours, unless the council wishes not to televise. The cheaper way to do it is simply to put a camera or one of, a recording device and video device on a tripod and put it out through YouTube the next day. But, I think the council has spoken, look at the mayor, very loudly about having live television coverage. And so, that's what's included in the IGA. And having installed that, we would be allowing the library to, library staff to use that. And we would be helping to train them and use it. It wouldn't be that complicated, but there would be some training. Also, we have a defibrillator in the back of the room. I hope people take note of that. We'd be carrying one or another over with us. It's a good idea, I think, and we suggested putting that in the proposed IGA. And that's pretty much it. The, there's an initial term that, their preference to have it run to 2020 and then automatically renew it for five-year periods thereafter indefinitely. So, we have an opportunity to continue there for as long as we wish and they wish. That's it. And you've had a chance to read it. I think it's pretty straightforward. And we recommend your approval at this time. Obviously, the library board won't take action until August 14th. I'll be at the meeting and answer any questions.
I know they have discussed it. They just, because of a clerical snafu, they weren't able to vote.
Yeah, so, we take action first. We could wait, and then they take action, and they wonder, when are we going to take action? We can go like that for months. But, we thought we would take action first. And council for the library was very much involved with our legal counsel in this, and so, will also be an advocate of this particular framework.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We've had a report from our city manager. Background material has been provided. Any further discussion? Alderman Morris?
I have three questions. My first question is, does the court still meet here? My second question is, how many meetings happen in this current space monthly? I think of the city council, I think of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the JRB quarterly. And I'm not sure if there are any others. And my third question is, will we also possibly have the opportunity or the option to hold meetings in the new city council space? I went through it the other day, and I was pleased with it, thinking it was larger than I expected. And it looked like just the front entryway somehow, maybe just, you know, not two sets of these chairs side by side, but one set of these chairs could fit down the middle of it. So, those are my three questions.
Good questions. I'll take the last one first, because I can remember that one for sure. We could, we could do that downtown in the new building, as you suggested.
Someone loved this olive green, you know?
We might get more money for this than the building, those chairs. But, it could be done. The Asuna's room is bigger than that space would be. Also, the other feature of that was to, how do we merge, for years, various plans that the council, previous councils have come up with? And most recently, that was the 2014-15 Plan, talked about the importance of the library and how we can somehow merge activities and what can we do as taxing bodies to work more together? So, I have to admit, that was part of the premise behind that feature, and I think the council supported that. How many meetings are held here? It's principally the council meetings, and usually, there's just one plan commission meeting, but we wanted the opportunity in case some project was pretty urgent, it was a rezoning or something, we wanted to be before the council, didn't want to wait five weeks, which would be the worst-case scenario if you missed the cycle. And they agreed to that. So, we can meet the first, second, third, and fourth Mondays. Then, they can program in the fifth Monday, which is usually an off week for us. There's an extra fifth Monday, in fact, coming up. What else meets in here? You're right, the JRB has been meeting on a quarterly basis, but there are other rooms in the basement that would accommodate that. That doesn't have as big a space demand as the potential for a long agenda like you have. And the first question, now I've forgotten.
Does the court still meet here?
You know, it can until we vacate the premises, and the shift is going to be over to the police station, where there's more, there is more security opportunity.
So, it does. I guess the other thing I was thinking of as far as, you know, and I appreciate merging taxing bodies' interests over at the library, but I know Alderman McAdams had a ward meeting here recently, and that was very convenient. And so, I suppose I think of impromptu meetings, or more so, impromptu meetings like that. Perhaps those could happen in the body of the new city hall.
I agree.
Also, I feel that, in just a moment, Alderman Fagan, there is going to, there are going to be meetings that I think we would want to hold in the new, in the new, the old, new city hall. And, you know, we will hopefully have some conference room space, such as we have here. However, having said that, I think the library presents itself some wonderful opportunities to do some other things in working with the library. You know, if in fact, we approve this concept tonight, and the library board does, and if we do approve the move with the Park District, we're going to discuss that later on this evening for the building. It really presents a, some great opportunities for collaboration in terms of space. So, I appreciate the question and hope that answers your question there partially. Alderman Fagan?
If I could also bring out a couple of points. We've already moved the finance committee to the police department. I believe the finance committee meets there. At least they have. I know Alderman Verbic and I had our ward meetings there. There was still plenty enough room. I've been to zoning board meetings. I mean, unless there's really something that's huge, there's less people in there than there is in here right now. I mean, so, I mean, that could be easily done or at the police department. The other thing is, when you talk about meetings, when you have a ward meeting here in this room at night, you are, actually, you're putting more service onto the city rather than having it at the police department, because that building's already open. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
So, it's kind of cost-cutting a little bit. But, you know, I think the only other time, the other meeting I was ever in here that was not a council meeting, that was packed to capacity, is when everybody wanted to describe what a weed was, I believe.
That was environmental.
Yep, yep. And, you know, you never get a crowd like that. But, on special occasions like that, you know, you'd have to go out and get a special venue for that, if you know that that many people are coming. So.
Thank you, Alderman Fagan. Any other comments? Alderman Verbic?
Yes, the meeting could move. Again, from a technology standpoint, as long as we have good network access, we could broadcast from different locations as well. To your concern, Mayor, about keeping that live broadcast, it's very possible, depending on where the budget ends up for the new system, it could be quite mobile.
Alderman Smith?
You know, I sit in here crunching the numbers tonight. There are 30, I've been doing this every meeting as this topic came up. Tonight, there's 38 people here with staff, press, and council members and public. So, the numbers are not astronomical. And I agree with Alderman Fagan, we could relocate to a mutual point or position, place, wherever you want to be, you know, if the time comes. One thing, though, I would like to bring to rest, there's always been, seems to be beaten down, remodeling this building. Well, one of the advantages of being in this building for all these years, and I think some of the older timers here will probably agree, I'm going to look towards the chief as one, I have a 2003 study done by Hanson Engineering out of Springfield, who's very reputable, just to remodel the eight. Now, this is 2003. My math has me at 15 years old. A million eight, $1,800,000 to renovate the HVAC system in this building. That does not include roughly another $1 million to relocate staff, time, et cetera. That's crazy. I mean, who in the council, I don't think anybody here would ever agree to remodel this building at that rate. So, that's why I'm behind this move. I want, just wanted to bring that to the public. And I'm going to post these documents out for people to look at, so everybody realizes what it's going to cost or would cost us if this air conditioning field fails. Where would we be Friday when this air conditioner fails? I know, chief's been in this building when that happened, and so have I. We can't allow people to visit and work in this condition. So, I'm all for this move, 100%. As far as technology goes, the library has one of the best fiber connections in the city, as well as the police department. We can televise as long as we need to. Another point, and I wish Jeff could come out and admit, or talk to him about this, but the equipment back there is aging. It is needed to be replaced if it is not near its end of life. So, this is a great move for the city. It needs to be undertaken.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
That ordinance, or that resolution passes. Thank you very much. Okay, number four. Resolution 2019-118, approving a bar liquor license with supplemental licensure for five video gaming terminals for Spahio Gaming LLC, doing business as Chips, at 122 East Hillcrest Drive. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager Nicholas, excuse me, just a moment. We do have one person who I think would like to speak to this item? No, no, we do not. Alderman, or, excuse me, City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. As you've read through the agenda, you know that this is sort of in companion with the next item. But, as we currently have a limit of five video gaming terminals, what's proposed here is the approval of the bar liquor license with supplemental licensure for up to five video gaming terminals. This is a matter that has been considered by the council as recently as the last meeting in general. But, at the last meeting, specifically, the council was asked to authorize and did approve a special use permit for this subject location. So, this is the last piece of that. We recommend its approval.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Now, we move to ordinances. We have no ordinances on second reading before us tonight. However, we have a couple for first reading. The first is ordinance number 2019-051, amending Chapter 38, intoxicating liquors, Section 38.27(c), gambling devices, as it pertains to the number of gambling devices allowed per establishment. Motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. Now that I think of it, maybe this was a chicken and the other one was the egg. I don't know. Could have been either way. So, as I say in my background, the legislature in the last session passed, and the governor signed into law a bill that expanded the number of permitted video gaming terminals from five, a maximum limit of five, to six. What you have before you tonight would automatically apply to existing establishments that have language in a resolution or ordinance that had restricted the number of terminals to five, including the matter you just approved. So, we recommend the approval of the council on this item.
And I did have one other person who would like to speak to this item. It's Steve Capitan.
Thank you, Mayor. Strip mall casinos do not attract visitors from outside the city to spend recreational dollars. Sadly, they are magnets for local gambling addicts to more readily part with their money. The state has already expanded gambling dramatically in casinos. We are, I had heard in a news report that we have more slot machine terminals than the state of Nevada. that we have more slot machine terminals than the state of Nevada. I think that we should consider limits. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We've heard public comment. We've heard the description of this ordinance from our city manager. Any further discussion or questions? If not, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Ordinance passes on first reading. Is there any council member who would want to move to waive second reading on this?
I'll make the motion, and we waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we waive second reading on this and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion?
Mayor Smith? Who was the second on that, please?
I'm sorry?
I was.
Alderman Fagan?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
That ordinance is approved. Thank you. Number two, ordinance 2019-052, authorizing an amendment to the annexation and development agreement for Park 88 to accommodate future growth. Rezoning from SFR-1 Single Family Residential to PDI, Plan Development Industrial, that's PDI, and PDC, Plan Development Commercial, that's Park 88 Group LLC. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. For your benefit and for maybe those who are not just in the audience but watching, I don't know if the people watching on TV can see those graphics, but you see before you with a darker line around the area that is Park 88. And the particular interest in the documents tonight is what's been known as the ORE parcel to the northeast corner. And what this boils down to, what the public hearing was about, what Mr. Good is here about tonight to possibly also address any questions you may have is to amend and restate the original development agreement in its entirety in order to update it and facilitate the development of the remaining undeveloped lands within Park 88, which includes currently, of course, the 3M buildings and Target. It's been very successful for the city of DeKalb.
Sure has.
For employment within our community, tax revenue, and so forth. There are no new buildings proposed with this request, but obviously, the framework that you are looking at tonight will encourage the further and final development of the remaining undeveloped lands in this area. Development agreement includes a new concept plan. Here you see in the graphic the existing buildings. Plus, those light yellow pods there are areas that, they're not actual buildings yet, but they would afford square footage of the extent that you see there in light yellow. Preliminary and final plans for those lots will require further council approval and review, and obviously, the Plan Commission review first and then council action. So, this wouldn't be the last step, but it's to set and revise and refine the framework according to changing market interest and demands. And as our ordinances have changed, we want to update this as well. So, this is really to get us ready for the next big thing. And having mentioned that, I should say that Mr. Good is always shopping and looking and responding, and he informed me on the way in tonight that he would appreciate it if the council supports this framework, if you could move to second reading tonight, because there is some interest in, I won't say which parcel, but this is something that certainly we would desire. I'll answer any questions you may have. Mr. Good is here tonight to answer any questions you may have as well.
It's been moved and seconded that we pass this ordinance on first reading at this point. Are there any questions of either Bill or Mark Good? Alderman Verbic?
More of a comment. I'm supporting this, but what I would ask in the future when other things are possible is that if the public could have more time with annexation decisions. In other words, I understand why you're asking us to waive second reading and approve, but I'm hopeful that we have more time in the future on these types of decisions that come along. Thank you.
Although I think this was discussed at planning and zoning, was it not?
Yes. They are, but the public doesn't as much have exposure to planning and zoning. More of the public are tuned in to city councils. So, my consideration of public is first hearing with city council, not as much with planning and zoning.
Thank you, Alderman Verbic. Any further questions or comments? If not, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Now that ordinance did a pass on first reading, if there is a council member who would like to move to waive second reading?
I'll move to waive second reading and approve. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
That ordinance passes. Mark Good, thank you for your continued support of this city.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Number three, ordinance 2019-053, requesting the transfer of property at 164 East Lincoln Highway from the DeKalb Park District, and approving an intergovernmental agreement for the transfer of said property. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved. It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Smith. I made the motion. Excuse me, Alderman Favor. Let me clarify that, Lynn. It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Favor.
Thank you.
Any discussion? City manager Nicholas, please.
Mayor, I just might point out, we have two very distinguished guests in the audience tonight. Park Board President Phil Young and Executive Director Amy Dahl are here also to answer any questions you may have. The council unanimously approved a resolution back in late May expressing your intent to accept the transfer of the nearing building at 164 East Lincoln Highway from the DeKalb Park District. And in that resolution, there was a phrase that we, the staff, were to initiate the discussion of an intergovernmental transfer of property that would meet the mutual agreement of the parties. We have before us tonight the possibility of action on a draft IGA, and I will just briefly touch on that. I think the points are very succinct. We have collaborated with the executive director on the wording in this. I will say that last week, as you've read in our local media and heard through the media, the Park Board had an opportunity to review at a second reading the resolution that we had talked about back in May and supported resolution and directed, I think it's fair to say, executive director now to proceed with discussion with us and with her own board on the IGA. Again, it's the chicken and egg thing. It's before you tonight. It'll come, as I understand, before the Park Board. That is, the IGA will come before the Park Board at its August meeting, which I believe is August 15th. Is that correct? So, what are the terms of what we've come up with so far? There are details on the timing of the transfer. It looks to have this completed by the end of December of 2019. The payment in the form of a dollar, not a $1.50. We had to argue over that. Not really. The city would take the property in as is condition. The district is concerned that we honor the historic character of the building, and I know the council feels likewise, and I feel likewise. And the district is also interested in having the right to repurchase the property if we determine that some later point it no longer served our purposes, even while preserving the facade of the building and the general historical character of that building. The agreement, otherwise, I think is pretty straightforward, the usual references to insurance and the like. We recommend your approval at this point. We would then, if the council were to approve, pass this on to Amy Dahl, who would take it before her board at its August meeting.
And this has received pretty good media play, for sure. There is one person who would like to speak to this item from the audience, and that is, once again, Steve Capitan.
Thank you, Mayor. Twenty-five years ago this summer, as a citizen, I was fighting city hall over an historic building. Much different context, as Bill knows. But in this particular case, you may all know, remember, that my feeling is that the city has not justified the move. I still do not see that this is a feasible move to make into the size building and the condition in which it is for the city operations for the long term. I agree, I don't think that the separating the city council meetings from the city hall is a good idea, but in addition to that, I still don't see the justification for fitting city operations into that size building. So, I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, it's been moved, seconded. We've had public comment. We've had a description, once again, from our city manager on this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you. This ordinance passes on first reading. Is there anybody who would like to suggest we waive second reading and approve?
Motion to waive and approve on second reading?
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
That ordinance is approved. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we move along to item M on the agenda, reports and communications. Each of the council members has the opportunity to report anything they'd like. And we'll start with our first ward, Alderman. Carolyn Morris.
It's been a hard past couple of weeks in the first ward. I want to say that Family Service Agency has really stepped up and is doing a lot to help with the recovery efforts of the two fires that we experienced in the ward. And these people are resilient, and I'm happy to be here to support them, and I'm trying to do that as we move forward, so.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Alderman Fanouken?
No report.
Alderman Smith?
A no report.
Alderman Fagan?
No report.
Fifth ward, Alderman Adams?
No report.
Alderman Verbic of the sixth ward?
No report.
Alderman Favor from the seventh ward?
No report.
A week from tonight, on July 29, our Environmental Commission, along with the 350 Kishawaki Organization, will be staging a special program at Huntley Park. The presentation features a number of electric cars, including Nissan's Leaf, Chevrolet's Bolt, Tesla's Model 3, and many more. They're going to bring out some electric assist bicycles, an electric motorcycle, and a lithium battery-powered commercial riding lawnmower. Wouldn't that be fun? The event will have a few national and local speakers and should prove fun for the entire family. So, folks are asked to bring their lawn chairs, and that's next Monday night, July 29, 5 o'clock, at Huntley Park. And Huntley Park is just south of Prospect there between Second and Third Streets. So, mark that on your calendar. Okay. City Clerk Lynn Physikis, anything to report?
Thank you. No report.
And finally, city manager Bill Nicholas?
No report.
We do have an executive session that I would call for tonight. I'd like a motion to approve to hold an executive session to discuss number one, personnel as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C1, and number two, pending or imminent litigation as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C11. I'd entertain a motion to move to executive session? So moved. It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Our regular meeting is now in recess. We will go into executive session. Thank you.